We pray Father God that you continue to bless our board members to do and make wise decisions. And I ask Father God in the name of Jesus that you will continue to let us do things decently and in all as we strive to improve every aspect of our school system. In this prayer we ask in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. We ask in the Jesus Christ most holy and righteous name, amen.
Amen.
All right. The agenda is the consensus. Do you want to change this? Anything else to add to the agenda?
I saw.
Joseph.
Second question.
Phil? Phil, please.
Yes, sir. You have a chance to review the minutes from last month. Are there any questions or comments or amendments to me tonight to the minutes in the gym meeting?
There's no objection, we'll place this on the consent agenda for seven thirty B. Next item on the agenda is the financial report. We have the tentative July twenty seventh financial report. This is going ending through June thirty two thousand seventeen. This is the tentative report. You've had a chance to review this. Are there any questions? You'll see the end of month fund equity is eight million nine hundred seventy-six thousand four hundred seventy-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. You'll notice that this time last year we had six million three hundred ten thousand one hundred fifty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents in the fund balance. Any questions about this document? Please we'll place that on the consent agendas for the regular monthly meetings. All right, that won't be approved. It'll just be information we will ask you to approve. Do you want to explain that, Mr. Ray Bush?
Yes, sir. With this time of year with the June thirty closing, we'll spend about the next two to two and a half months going through the process of closing the books, making adjusting entries, and preparing our statements. That'll take till about mid-September. With the September, end of September meeting, we should have a final closing at that time. Either then or in October. At that time, we would have June, July, and August that we would have prepared to get to approve on their respective months' results. Just because of the way things have to be booked with our particular school sys-, with all school systems, the June thirty is kind of the drop dead for making sure that you've got all your numbers posted and sent up to the state. That's their deadline. We try to beat that by a couple of weeks and make sure we're in line so we're ready to go. So you won't be approving anything over the next couple of months, but we will give you tentative numbers for each of those months as we roll forward and try to keep you aware of where we're at on our closing.
We also have the e-Squad summary information here. You'll see the monthly collections going back to May of fifteen. Our last monthly collection was four hundred sixty-seven thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. We've got a number of projects going on. Of course, the nickel school is the largest project currently out there. Performing arts and of course, we know that groundbreaking. And inside renovations are currently going on. And they're on schedule to be ready to start school. I talked with Mr. Pike this morning and he said the plumbers were coming in tomorrow again to put the fixtures in. And he thought that they should be through by, I'm gonna say, he said Thursday. Oh, no. Wednesday, we've got Wednesday of next week and then the teachers come back. So he thought Thursday, by Thursday next week they'll be finished. And then the teachers come back following Monday. So he was confident they would be finished. Are there any questions about the e-Squad? All right. School nutrition. We have several purchases here. Of course, Donna, our school nutrition director, is now working in Lowndes County, our former school nutrition director. So our interim right now is Sheila. Sheila is working as the interim. So we're working with her on this, but we've got these purchases here. You'll see the more bale fixture equipment is seventeen thousand sixty dollars. And the strategic equipment in supply is thirteen thousand four hundred seventy-eight dollars and fifty-two cents. So we're recommending the low bid on that. And this actually doesn't require more approval, but we thought we would present it as information. And you'll see the Williams Institutional Foods is low on the acre chemical supplies. And then Chemical Sanitation Services. S-PAC is the low bidder on that. So we're presenting these as information tonight. No board action required. Athletic report. We've got an athletic director, Mr. Randy Gare here tonight to present an athletic update. Thank you for being here.
Sure.
What I've given you there is some information about certainly some highlights and some major accomplishments of our young people there on the first page. Fifteen out of eighteen competitive teams qualified for state competition. We had a state champion wrestler. We had two young men that you'll meet later tonight win national championships in weightlifting. That took place in Atlanta. We had nine athletes receive scholarships. That was football, tennis, two in track. We won five region championships in boys' basketball, girls' and boys' swimming, and girls' and boys' tennis. All won region championships. Also, I've noted there for you that we hosted ten region events and region competitions. And I want to highlight that because we brought those to our community. So that means that a couple of things. One, we don't travel. And two, folks come from other areas and hopefully they eat in Douglas and spend money in Douglas. And it saves us money and brings money back to our community. And hopefully it gives our young people a home field or home court advantage. And that requires a lot of work by our staff. They do a great job with that and we're happy to do it. Next, I've given you the bios and this was released to the enterprise today of our three new head coaches. In tennis, Dylan Wundum. In girls' basketball, Tasha Kimble. And baseball, Si Jones. They have some pretty good-looking resumes there in my opinion. And the last thing I've provided you with is a financial spreadsheet that shows money that went through our athletic office. And that money came through gate revenues. There was some booster support in some sports. And then, of course, how the money was dispersed. Now, that doesn't reflect all the booster support nor does it reflect all individual support. Some booster clubs will pay for items through their, not through the coaches, but at the coach's request. And they will pay with the vendor rather than running them through our office. And some individuals will make a donation to a particular sport to cover a meal or cover travel or cover t-shirts or something that they would like the kids to have also by paying the vendor rather than running it through our office. But these are the items that came through our bookkeeping system and things that we can account for. So I can't account for those that were outside of our office.
Okay, so the booster support through CHS is when CHS receives the vendor invoice.
Correct.
Which there's no particular reason why sometimes the vendor sends it to the high school and sends it directly to the booster club?
Well, we would prefer that they come through the, through our office. It saves a headache on paperwork. But sometimes they will order things at the coach's request or the coach will order them with the booster club agreeing to pay for those.
And then where there's major differences, that's where the booster club has either supplemented or the parents have supplemented.
Correct. Correct. Our sources of revenue, Ms. Miller, are pretty much gate receipts, fundraisers, parent expenses, and then what we get from outside donations, whether it be a booster organization or an individual.
But that's not reflected in here.
Correct, yes, sir. Those outside donations are not unless they come through my office. For example, if I get an invoice from RNS Sports and our coaches ordered it and they have agreed with the booster, particular booster organization to pay for it, we will pay the invoice and they will reimburse us. And in some cases, like I said, in some cases, that booster organization said, well, you know, I like doing business with ex-vendor. So you go ahead and order it and we'll just pay them.
Does the gate revenue include the season ticket sales?
Yes, yes.
Well, what is the season tickets budget? That's what I'm trying to call them.
Okay, those expenditures are money that came from football season ticket sales and were used in those particular sports.
Okay, so that's?
That came from football revenue.
That's going into that sport?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I didn't understand I called.
Yes, and you'll see, boys' and girls' basketball are pretty much self-sufficient. And we'd like for baseball to be self-sufficient. Weight room comes out of season ticket sales is what, not weight room. Training room comes out of season ticket sales. And that's a training room for all of our sports. It's not limited to one sport. That's all of our sports.
That's tape and medical supplies and all those things.
Exactly.
To students and young people.
Exactly.
Whatever they own or whatnot.
Likewise, general athletics. That one's a little bit misleading in the expenditures because that money kind of makes a cycle. We didn't spend nearly that much money without more money coming in. Because in our bookkeeping system, let's say we're gonna start a gate for a basketball game. Money is, the start cash for those gates comes from general athletics. Let's say it's a thousand dollars for a figure. Then at the end of that night, that revenue that we've collected above that thousand dollars goes to those two basketball programs. But the original start cash for the thousand dollars goes back into general athletics. So it goes out and back in and out and back in. So it presents a larger number than it really is.
But don't you show it in your expenditures, that thousand dollars that you gave to them?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And you cash back?
Yes, ma'am, exactly. And our revenue from general athletics, we've been very blessed with the Touchdown Club has given me control of Trojan Mart, which is something that has been a good fundraiser for us. That money goes into general athletics and I quite frankly pay for people whose budgets fall short. I help them with that as well as paying our GHSA dues, our region dues, some travel office supplies.
Do you still pay our seat tax?
Our seat tax. I'm not familiar with that one.
Okay. It's generated from your income. It used to be the state requiring that you pay. Maybe that's your GHSA dues now.
That may be. I'm not sure would we have a, not that I'm aware of. But through GHSA we get certain amounts of insurance on our young people, particularly catastrophic injury in athletics.
So you take care of your athletes?
Yes, sir. We take care of one policy with GHSA. The school board takes care of a secondary policy. And then school board policy requires that each individual athlete have insurance.
And the school system pays for a secondary supplemental policy for every student in the district. And I'll tell you, that's something kind of unique. I've worked in two other school systems and neither one of those systems purchased a policy like that for all their students.
Fifty-six thousand insured.
And if I'm not mistaken, that's an umbrella policy for all athletes.
Well, it's for all schools?
All students.
So it's all students?
Yeah, it's all students.
Okay.
But what's the purpose of the student having insurance? If you have GHS, they pay and you have a school system.
With GHSA it would be catastrophic.
A paralyzation, a death, unfortunate as that could be, something along those.
Okay, okay.
They don't care if that's a frame name.
Okay.
We said would.
The supplemental would cover if somebody's insurance wouldn't cover up to a certain amount, then the supplemental would kick in. And it's not a large amount that they will fund, but it's supplemental.
It's, from a personal perspective, my youngest son had a couple of concussions in the same year span. And what our school insurance didn't pay, they picked up a portion of that and then we had some out of pocket, but it was certainly appreciated.
Any more questions at this point?
I do. Is it, Mr. John Randy, is it? I know we've got a hundred and eighty systems in the state. Do they all do their booster club situations differently? I mean, is it?
Yes. And every booster, and every booster club is a little bit different here and there, you know. Some of ours.
Are there any compliance issues that you run into that would impact our students by not having the funding go through your organization or?
Not that I'm aware, not that I'm aware of. We're gonna meet our obligations and our philosophy is we're gonna give our young people everything they need. And then we'll try to give them everything they want. But what they gotta have and what they want are often two different things. We're gonna meet their, we're gonna meet their needs.
But you don't see that as a situation that's gotta be changed? It's working fine, not working, I mean, what's?
Well, you know, we do, I will bring up the one situation we have with revenue produced by signs at the baseball field. I like that, I like that revenue back in the athletic department rather than through a booster organization. It's produced at the school. Our coaches have sold those signs and contracts. And that money, prior to my arrival, went into a booster club account. I would prefer that come back into the baseball account to be used at our baseball coaches discretion.
Well, doesn't the state require that any money raised by employees of club go through the school's books and paid from the school books rather than from private?
No. I would prefer it be that way, but I don't think it is that way, Ms. Johnson.
You're not doing it that way?
Yeah, not in all cases, yes, ma'am.
But I think, I'm not sure either, but I think that if your coaches are selling that stuff or your students, that that money's supposed to come into your bookkeeping department. And they allocate, whether it's for baseball, football, you know, you can say away it goes. And then it's spent the same way.
That would be reasonable to me, yes, ma'am, I agree, one hundred percent.
Not to be argumentative, but as a dugout member, I, as a parent, have sold those signs. It was not just the coaches and certainly wasn't just the students.
No, no, I don't think we asked the student.
But it was the school manager, wasn't it? It was definitely the school manager, but it's better with a booster. Okay.
And all that money was spent on the field and?
Yeah, about the sign man, I don't really care how long it's been with the baseball program. I don't care what it's run through. But when I, and I told some of the dugout club, they may do that and nobody really had a problem with it. But that's what they said. They said, but, you know, that was a deal where the coaches were gonna sell this stuff and do this. And they never did. It ended up being us selling it, us doing it. And, you know, if we're gonna do it and all, we're, you know, and I don't care where it might be, as long as it's for the baseball program. Absolutely. But the thing, and this is the thing that I don't really understand. It keeps getting brought up and you just mentioned it, that, you know, so the coach has full authority to spend that money how he sees fit. And my understanding is that's what that money's for anyway.
Absolutely.
And are we having issues with that not happening?
I think from my perspective.
I guess that's my question, because I've heard that two different times. And my understanding is he's got full authority, whoever he is. Now, we've got a new coach, but they have full authority to spend that money how they want to. And that's been what I've told people, is that, you know, their program, they spend it how they want to. You don't have to like it. You don't have to raise money. But if you raise it, it's there, good or bad.
I appreciate that.
But, but my point is, my understanding, that's how it was supposedly being done anyway. Have we had issues with that or?
Only with one group. And I won't say that it's been an issue of not getting the money. It's been an issue of the perception that there are strings attached to companies.
Well, and that's what my question, because my understanding is, you know, and we've talked about this some and I'm a firm believer, if you hire somebody to run a program, let them have to run a program. They'll either succeed or fail, but it'll be on them.
Sure.
If you tell them how to spend the money, then they don't have success. How are we gonna trust that life? But that keeps getting brought up and my, and like I said about baseball, my understanding was they were able to spend that money how they want to, I thought. But maybe that's another conversation.
There's some gray areas there, I mean, with these things.
Let me answer this before you get off. I'm trying, and like I said, I just got to look at this a little while ago. I haven't really had time to look at it. But let's go back to, first one on the list, without going out and picking on anybody across the country. It's got expenditures, gate revenue, boosters, boosters, HHS, and then season ticket money that comes in. Okay, so there's a deficit there.
Yes.
That money is made up through parents or outside booster club selling stuff. And obviously, that one right there is not much money. Some of them are substantial amount of money. That money's made up through, from the expenditure portion, either through them selling something, parents donating, buying something, whatever. Is that correct?
Correct.
So one right down the list we've got, there's a huge difference in expenditures and the budget. So they're having to raise a lot of money to support that program.
Which one, cheerleading?
Cheerleading. So they're having to raise a ton of money.
Yes, they are.
Okay. That's what I didn't understand, how we were going from this side and over here.
Yes, yes, they are.
So we track their expenditures even though the parents are supplementing and the boosters are supplementing?
Yes. Well, in their case, in the case of cheerleading, they don't have a booster organization that's raising money. Yes, on their fundraisers and?
And that's what I was getting at, because if you look down there, you go, oh, we're spending a ton of money on that. Well, no, we're not.
Correct.
You know, if they're raising that money, they spend what they want to as far as, so that's what I'm trying to get across there.
And they don't have a booster club per se.
Yeah.
You got a parent that's a booster of their child.
And then you got, like I say, and then you've got also, I guess, like with these expenditures also, if a booster club buys and pays for something, never goes through the school, then it's true.
Exactly. Exactly.
So really, what in fact you are funding is simply what's budgeted?
Correct.
And you're funding that out of gate or season ticket budget, what you're calling it?
Yes. Season ticket budget and/or any revenue they produce from their ticket sales.
So for example, like basketball is producing revenue gate.
Yes. Yes, and the boys had produced more revenue gate because while they still played the same number of games, the boys played into the second or third round of the playoffs. And we got a share of that in the playoffs. You get some, a small travel stipend in part of the gate. That would be the difference in theirs.
I think I totaled this earlier, the season ticket budget that goes into the other sports. It came out to approximately fifty-four thousand dollars. Five, fifty-two, five, so fifty-two, five of football gate money goes to the other sport, correct?
Now, while we're talking about it, I mean, when you start dealing with extra kicker stuff, the only thing the school system is responsible for does, salaries and facilities. So anything that that organization's got to use for that sport, they got to get somewhere, either through fundraisers, booster clubs, ticket sales.
Right, this is all money that's been generated through our assets.
Yes, we can't buy the tax dollars, baseballs or football helmets or basketballs or those things. Those are all bought through athletic uniforms. We can't use tax dollars to buy uniforms, softball uniforms, such as that.
So Mr. Locke wants to clarify that salaries and facilities are?
Are capable of keeping facilities.
Capital purchases, large equipment that can be capitalized, things of that nature. You want to speak to that, Mike? What kind of purchases can we use? For example, there was some wrestling equipment that was bought, I think a year or a year and a half ago. Things that were mounted on the walls and things of that nature. Bats. We can't buy things that can be capitalized using tax dollars, but not uniforms and balls and bats and all that type of stuff.
I have a follow-up question concerning the spins, out-of-pocket things that we do ask our parents and guardians to step up to the plate with. Do the coaches keep up at all with any sort of average out-of-pocket? Unless the parent tells them, Pam, this is what I'm spending out-of-pocket. Do they, do they have any way of knowing what they're asking of that family?
I would think they would have a general idea. I don't know that it's been documented. I would have to research that.
My daughter danced, so everything we did was out-of-pocket, so I did, did. And we didn't like some candy, sir.
We got lots of questions, but I do have one more. When the children travel to go to events outside of the county?
Yes.
We do purchase meals to some extent. Is that included in these, how is that?
It is, yes.
And how is that?
And we try to limit it in terms of mileage. If we're traveling over sixty miles, then we're gonna make some purchases. When I took this position, we had When I took this position, we had some issues where we were traveling to Waycross, playing a game, buying food in Waycross and getting home by 7:30. Well, that's about the time kids are gonna get home anyway, and, and my thinking, that wasn't necessarily a good use of our money. So, if our young people are gonna travel over 60 miles, we allot some money for food. If we travel, say wrestling's gonna spend a day, they may have to go for a day-long tournament. Of course, where they're big 20 miles away, we would allot some food allotment. And then when we get to the playoffs, we cover all of that. We cover all of their, their food and lodging, should they have to travel.
That's what I was gonna say, look at that too, as far as, not just how far it was.
Yes.
I know we had some, I, well, this week, yesterday, maybe 6:30, get back to the block. Well, that's, Waycross, like I say, it's not that far, but, I mean, that's...
Exactly, time, time is a consideration.
Getting cars, dog to dead.
Yes, time is a consideration.
Did you? Are you saying that you take kids from here to Waycross and they perform or they participate, and you don't feed them?
That's correct.
Oh, no.
Depends on how long they're there.
Oh, no. That would never do. Those children are hungry when they leave home, so you know if they gone and participated. If you don't do anything to take them to Burger King, it doesn't matter what time it took them to get back home. It matters what they did, and they use energy.
Doesn't the cafeteria send some sort of snacks on the bus?
Yes. After, after school, they have access to juice and peanut butter and jelly sandwiches.
After school?
Yes.
But after they get out there and perform, and some type of activity, and we put them on the bus and bring, they don't get anything then?
Not, not on that close a trip, no.
Oh, God, no. Of course, that's not go, that's not right. When, when you and I just ride, oh, I ride over to Waycross, we want a snack, we want something, and we're in, you know, I mean, maybe I need to revisit that.
I'll, I'll certainly revisit that, be glad to.
I'll help you.
Okay, I'll hold you to that.
Randy, one more question, you're kinda going back to that, that out-of-pocket from the parents and not really knowing what they're... I, I guess where I'm going with this is, in, in the age of social media and, and how, and I hate to use the term fake news here, call it a candidate, but... Well, if someone were to think an event or participation was too expensive for them to sustain for their child, or didn't wanna be embarrassed or ashamed of not being able to do that with their child, and just simply, at some point in that child's life, go, "That's what we're gonna do, we're not, we're not gonna go out, we're not gonna go out for a swim, we're not, I, I, I can't, you know, I'm gonna have other things for you to do, I'm not gonna say I can't afford it, but I'm gonna find other things that I can afford for you to do, to do." Knowing that whole time, maybe they've not participated because they've gotten bad information.
Right.
Right? From, from the, from the, from the neighbor, from the whoever, from maybe a former participant that was disgruntled or something. I just look at it as maybe if there was a clarification of what a parent expects out-of-pocket, and maybe that happens at orientations, but are you even getting that person that might be discouraged to the door to go to orientation and find out, "Hey, you know what, there are ways I can afford to have my child participate."
Right.
And I'd hate for us to miss out on those children that do, simply because there's a perception that maybe their parents or families can't afford what it is. I'm not saying we can figure out a way to pay for it at this point, I'm just saying that we, we at least don't know, they don't think that something's gonna cost them $5,000, when in fact it may cost them less than $100. You know, I, I don't know that, but I'm just, people can work some things up in their mind about that, and it, and I just hate for that to be something that's holding kids back.
I would, I would respond in this way, I know in cheerleading, Ms. Warner breaks that down, that's what those expenses are gonna be. I don't know this, if she's ever had someone who said, "Look, I'd like to do this and I can't because I can't afford it." That group knows ahead of time, and they have opportunities for the student to raise money, should they make the team. It doesn't cost them anything to try out. And then if they make the team, they have opportunities with her guidance and help to raise that money. I'll go a step further and say, I am not aware of any kid that's ever wanted to participate in our athletic programs that if they didn't have the means to make it happen, we've made it happen.
Is it not possible for your coaches to come up with some kind of estimate, what the program will cost a kid?
I think it's possible, I think it's possible. But, but, but most of them cost nothing, the vast majority of them, it cost them nothing.
I wonder where that part of expense comes from then?
Well, our policy is, if a, a young person's gonna keep it, then they, they pay for it, whether that be shoes or the uniforms, and it's become, didn't happen in my day, but it's become pretty popular that in cheerleading and softball and baseball, they want to all keep their uniforms. So, they wind up getting new uniforms almost every year. Those, those sports where we strictly pay for the uniforms, we keep those. So, the out-of-pocket could come from something that they're gonna keep. Basketball, they buy their own shoes, they keep those.
Do they understand that, what it's gonna cost them, if they keep it up front before they start?
Yes, they, they're made aware of that, well, they're, those costs. But I, I, I agree, we probably should put something down on paper, giving a young person a general estimate of what it's gonna cost them to participate, and by and large, it's mental.
I mean, probably have some.
Sure.
Yeah, it does, I just, I do, when I say it's, it's probably, I'm probably making a bigger deal out of it than what it really is, but if you, that person's just gonna be silent, you're never gonna hear it. It's just gonna be the kid that gets into it and goes, "Oh, my gosh, we can't afford to do this, what do I, what do I do?" This is the one that's not even showing up to try out, not even showing up to, that's why.
And identifying those would be, be something we need to look into. I will tell, I will tell you this, it's not to turn anyone from trying out for cheerleading. We have, we have 50 cheerleaders and another 50 that left unhappy.
I have, I have, I have sat through the University of Georgia's cheerleading tryout. And it's a two-day event, and it is absolutely brutal. And to watch, this, the, the dance, the dance teams were trying out on one half of the basketball court, and the men and women's cheerleading were trying out on the other half of the court. And they start that day, and they just go through there, they tap you on the back of the head, and you're excused, that's it. There's no talking, there's no, and they cut it down from 350 to about 25.
Appreciate your information.
Thank you.
We're gonna have that again, we're gonna have that again.
Anytime, thank you so much.
The next item on the agenda is Disproportionality Report. We have Dr. Tanya Johnson, our Special Education Director, here to present to us the Disproportionality Report.
Good evening. Hopefully you all have had the time to review the letter that was submitted to Dr. Lee's in reference to the Department of Special Education and our students with disabilities. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act requires states to make manual determinations of districts who have been identified as having disproportionality. And within Coffee County for the fiscal year of '16, we were found to be disproportionate in the area of identification. And through the state review, we were found to be non-compliant in some areas. The state came in and reviewed our policies, procedures, and practices, and then they did request that we make some corrections. And since that time, we have made the corrections, however, in, I mean, which is very good, but according to our numbers, that we continue to be disproportionate in the area of identification, but we are continuing to work on this in this area. For the fiscal year '17, we continue to be disproportionate in identification. But like I said, we are continuing to work on that in addition to discipline, we're found to be disproportionate in that area as well. However, with that, in their review, they did not find, find that we were non-compliant in any areas of compliance practices, procedures, or policies. So, we will be having to spend 15% of our funds in, in reference to having men able to address this area or these areas to make improvements. And we are beginning to have conversations with the administration in, in being able to address those areas. We are also collaborating with our GLRS and also our district, we have liaison with the George Park Education in reference to this. Are there any questions in the lines?
Ms. Johnson?
I mean, what identification, what is included in that cap?
Basically, we were disproportionate in the area of over-identifying students that were intellectually disabled in the area for, for black students.
That was including the discipline of those children?
For the fiscal year '17, it was black students as well, over-identification, I mean, over, in, in discipline, yes. Over-identifying or overspending students that were, have been there.
But overall, we're non-compliant, so overall?
Correct, we are compliant in our policies, procedures, and practices.
But now, our, well, this thing all started, our disproportionality. My understanding was, again, we're black students, but the number of black students we had was the same, but our overall number dropped, making this a higher percentage, am I wrong?
Right, our number still was, were within the...
But our overall number dropped, making that...
Right, making it continue to...
Our, our number of students didn't change, but the number of other students changed, went down, and that's what fits in that category, it's not like we did anything different. We had a lot more kids come into that program or anything, but that number stayed the same.
Correct. Still continue to be disproportionate, but we are, like you said, working with our administrators and doing some professional learning for the area of cultural competency. And we will be having PDIS, you know, training, although we have been having that within the school system, so we're hoping that that can help.
This is for the students with disabilities?
This is for students across the board, but, you know, that will also be beneficial in helping with that area.
Dr. Johnson, you wanna describe, you mentioned the training you've got coming up, do you wanna describe who that training is for and what the topic is? You said it briefly, but maybe in more detail, you've got the cultural competency training?
Cultural competency training coming up, I think it's next week.
And who's gonna be included?
Our administrators will be a part of that.
So, all the principals and assistant principals are gonna be trying in cultural competency?
Correct.
Correct.
What's the name of the theme?
Cultural competency. And then we're also monitoring, you know, our students with disabilities as far as the discipline goes. We want our administrators to be looking at other alternative ways of disciplining our students rather than, you know, hallways or out-of-school suspensions. So, we need to be more conscientious of that.
There was one acronym I didn't figure out, it's GLRS.
Georgia Learning Resource Services?
Well, thank you, Dr. Johnson. All right, our next item on the agenda is the Coffee County 21st Century Community Learning Center Grant. Dr. Evans will present this.
Okay, good afternoon. You have two documents that we're gonna look at briefly. You have a seven-page evaluation of our 21st Century Learning Grant, and just as a reminder, the 21st Century Grant provides the funds for the after-school services that are conducted down at Boys and Girls Club Center, and it pays for the staff and the activities that, that go on down there for our students that are bussed in after school down to that center. The evaluation, this is a seven-page summary that came from the more than 100-page total document, and I do have that entire document, if you'd be interested in reading that, but I wanted to just highlight the summary. We are going into year four, and we're required by the grant to have an external evaluator come in and evaluate our services and our programs. So, that was done by Norris Consulting Group out of Warner-Robbins, and I'll just hit a few highlights here on the summary. Conclusions, the 21st Century Community Learning Center for Coffee is successfully providing quality after-school programming, and they gather information from students and parents in this section, and you can see those bulleted items of the survey results. On the next page, commendations and recommendations based on some of the survey results. The after-school stakeholder focus groups, they interviewed a groups of people totaling about 32 individuals that included students, key informants, partners, teachers, fair pros, and parents. Dr. Lee's and I was in one of those groups, community people, Boys and Girls Club Board members were in that group. And then below that, you will see the survey results highlighted. And going on over a couple pages, suggested opportunities for improvement. One thing we would like to do in the future is expand our services, and, but that's sort of limited to the facility that we're in. It's, it's full down there, we serve about 110 students on any given day, so there's not much room for growth at that facility. So, hopefully in the future, we can do something different. And on the next page, the, it says, "Despite being able to suggest constructive comments to continue to improve the initiative, stakeholders sincerely believe that the initiative has been beneficial for students and families, especially those most at risk." The kids go in down there, they have fun activities provided in addition to completing homework. They do get a meal down there before they're sent home in the afternoon, that's provided through second harvest. So, the boys and girls that attend down there really seem to enjoy the activities down there. And then the next page, recommendations for next steps. The management team will take this evaluation and look at the feedback and make adjusted, adjust whatever's needed in programming to make the improvements happen. And continue to explore ways to enhance the exterior of the facility to include additional playground equipment, outdoor facilities, and security features, and to continue to encourage and promote increased parent participation. So, overall, this was a good evaluation, we feel like. And that leads us into the, the second document, which is the actual grant award. We are entering year four of the five-year grant, and we have been approved again to receive $349,863 for year four.
And we will place this grant award on the consent agenda to be approved by the board.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Our next item is a resolution for the West Coffee Middle School, the old high school facility, to phase this facility out. As you know, we've sold that building, and we need to have the Georgia Department of Education officially take it off of their books, and that's what this will do. As you know, we've sold that building, and we need to have the Georgia Department of Education officially take it off of their books, and that's what this will do. Any questions about that? We'll place this on the consent agenda at the regular meeting. The next item is the resolution for a Walmart credit card for the central office to be able to purchase at Walmart. Any questions about this? Any questions about it?
The only question I have is, are there specific people that's assigned to it that's controlled, what is that?
We handle, we, we will handle this the same way we handled our, our current credit card. Um, we have been using the existing credit card with Walmart, but we continue to get, our, our employees continue to get taxes charged because they miss the, the tax exempt form for some reason. And, uh, we always have to go back to Walmart and go through the process of getting them to refund and credit our account for those taxes. So by getting a Walmart card instead, we control that through the purchasing department, and any employee that utilizes that card will have to sign it out, provide a requisition that shows what they're gonna purchase, and in that scenario, what that cost of that purchase is gonna be before they take their card. And then they have to break back that within the day and turn it back in purchasing with the receipt and so on that they use, uh, when they use that card.
The other ones, I just recall that it was gonna be assigned to somebody when we did it for the other schools, you know, the principals, whatever, and that's why nobody specifically named in this one.
It'll probably, it'll show enough under my name if they need a, a person, um, but it would, it would all, all be controlled through the purchasing office.
They don't issue you a tax exempt number at the store?
We, we have a tax exempt number, but these stores, year to year, they wait there, and we have to re, reapply and get new cards, uh, or new, uh, supply new forms to them annually.
Every year?
With every, yeah, with vendors, yeah. And it's not just Walmart, it's.
It just schools that has to do that?
No, um, I think any nonprofit would face that. It's almost an annual thing anymore.
Well, they, they'd be different if the retailer, if somebody like me using buys something for resale.
Right.
See, I don't have to do that every year.
Right. Because we're using that item, we're not, you know, which normally you would pay taxes as individuals, but because we're a nonprofit, we're a tax exempt.
Anybody else? That's it. Uh, we'll place that on the consent agenda for the meeting at seven-thirty. The five-year facility plan, it's time for us to have the Georgia Department of Education come in and facilitate a new five-year facility plan. We have to present them with a request, move to come in and do this exercise, and once we complete that, it will allow us to draw entitlement funding for renovations and modifications and new construction within the Coffin County schools. So we're asking to, the board to approve this resolution, requesting, uh, Georgia Department of Education assistance in developing a new five-year facility plan. Any questions? We'll place this on the consent agenda at seven-thirty. Surplus property. Dr. Banks, you want to take this?
I have requested with, uh, Mr. Spikes about surplus property, uh, and he pretty much was supposed to give with Mr. Tricia. There was some property, I want to say that Brockton area, that they were wanting to, I guess, get rid of and get moved. Kids don't utilize that property anymore, so that's where I, I don't know the specific price that was attached to it, but, uh, that's something that we wanted to get, uh, moving to get rid of from our school system.
I talked with Mr. Spikes this morning, he talked about a sealed bid possibly to be submitted if, uh, that the board approved this to be surplused. It's back where the old school was at, and my understanding is, uh, Miss Spikes wants this removed, it's, they've got new equipment, and this is pretty far away from the school, and, uh, it's not used. So there will be some cost for whoever does purchase it to move it off the property, so we're asking the board to declare a surplus, and then Mr. Spikes will, uh, do sealed bids, and if nobody takes it with a sealed bid, then we will place it on gov deals. All right. Tax digest, we have the, and we have received the updated, uh, tax digest, and we're presenting that to the board tonight. You'll see the five-year history. This will run in the newspaper, and then we will come back to the board and ask for approval of a milit rate. And it appears our timeline will be the next monthly meeting, we've got time to do it at our next monthly meeting to ask the board for approval. And then the county, once we approve it at our next monthly meeting, they will approve the county milit rate, including the school milit rate. Any questions about this, you'll see that, uh, the milit rate will move from sixteen point one oh eight, if we take the rollback, it will roll the village back to sixteen point oh nine three, which would actually be a reduction in, uh, the village here in Coffin County, so. And that would be the fourth year that we've rolled back taxes in Coffin County. If there's no questions, this is an information item, we'll bring it back to the board at our next monthly meeting, and we will be running this as an added paper. Policies, we've been discussing policy G A G with the board, uh, been working on this for a couple months now, and I think we have something that will please the board. Been working with our legal counsel, Mr. Cottingham, to make sure that we were within the confines of, of what the board desires, and we feel like we've got a policy here that, that will work. The immediate family, we're defining immediate family, I mean, that's been one of the biggest concerns, we are using the same law that governs the board. So to be a board member, you cannot have a child, sibling, or parent, or spouse of a child, sibling, or parent as an administrator within the system, so we'll use the same, uh, standard for our hiring practices at our schools. Immediate family will be a spouse, child, sibling, or parent, or the spouse of a child, sibling, or parent, as presently or hereafter defined by doing the school law. And this, mainly will govern the, the principals and assistant principals and the hiring personnel on their, their campuses.
They normally affect hiring going forward.
That's right. Nothing to do with current employees, it will not affect current employees, we're not gonna move anybody or anything like that because of this policy, but moving forward, a principal or assistant principal, they can't hire an immediate family member, which would be a spouse, child, sibling, or parent, or the spouse of a child, sibling, or parent. Question? Okay. We're gonna place this on the consent agenda for approval at the seven-thirty meeting. All right, audience participation?
There's none.
I would ask the board that we move to an executive session to discuss and deliberate upon the appointment, enforcement, compensation, hiring, disconnection, or dismissal of periodic evaluation for rating of a public officer or employee. And I would also ask that we, uh, discuss, uh, real estate with the board and, uh, ask that we move to executive session.
I move to move to executive session.
Mr. President, Mr. Middle?
Frank Finau.
Mr. President.
Move we exit executive session.
President. All right. Okay, vote session is adjourned.